Hello?
Hello, is this Lieutenant Kingston?
Says.
Lieutenant Kingston, I am the Alderman Soler of the town and it is my job to organize the city council. I was wondering if you had time to run by the courthouse and speak to me?
I, do you just give me, um, just a few minutes here?
You're alright, I'll see you when you get here.
Good, thank you.
What'd you think, Bra?
I liked that first one, he showed off.
Hell yeah, love that one, like, second was cool, the first was like-
It's one of those, it's one of those that was grandfathered in, because it's been in the city for so long, it's grandfathered in and it has everything in-
If you're here because I called you, I still need to speak to you, uh, take your time though, we're waiting on a couple more people to show up, I'm just gonna say I'll be in the courthouse when you're ready.
Right, I'm basically like-
Yeah, we could head inside.
Get out of the rain.
You ever notice when you like pull an umbrella, you just like duck walk, you're like upright torso?
You gotta have a real stiff back.
I love running with an umbrella out.
Look at that form.
Makes him look intelligent.
Yeah.
Don't you think?
You look smart. You look smart doing that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm like a- It's a, what is this, like a 1920's cartoon kinda thing?
And you know what's crazy?
It's that.
Okay, I've DM'd a few people and I think we're gonna have everybody except Yang. We got Belle, we got Yang, Dirk is here, Kingston's on his way, Luxana, I'm about to call her, Zeb is here, one, two, three, four, five, six, and then Vex is here, yeah, that's seven. We're gonna have everyone except, uh, Yang, and he's on another character doing police academy training right now. Tried to buy a car, they only take credit, now it's locked again, somebody hit me please, uh oh, poor priest. Tarek, I only have one emo bind and it's the Dick Smallsy one and it doesn't feel like it would suit the older. Uh...
Alright Bra, like, do you need a conversation with everybody or are you doing things individually?
Nah, I need it with everybody, if you wouldn't mind waiting.
Yeah, dude, I got all night, I could be here for six hours if I need to, dude.
Excuse, excuse me while I take this, uh, hello?
Uh, Hattie, sorry, I just, uh, fell your phone.
Uh, no, it's alright, Ms Wrangler, I was, uh, wondering if you'd come down to the courthouse and speak with me, please?
Uh, absolutely, I'll be right there.
Alright, see you here. I accidentally put my hands up and it fucks up holding the phone when you do that. She might not be all the way logged in yet. Oh my god, that fucked up the animation too, I hate that.
I had a dream that this one was listed and then later it wasn't listed.
Yeah, I can, I mean, it, I can renovate this about anything, anyway.
Okay, yeah, honestly, I think, I think it's out of my price range at the moment, I'm just looking at accumulating a few people for, you know, yeah, I feel you.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Everyone's accounted for as soon as I call cell. Cops deadass let my boy die today.
What?
Oh, Belle got here quick. Ms Wrangler?
Hey, uh, oh, sorry, I didn't even see you there.
No, just, uh, mingle, uh, have a seat wherever, we're waiting on, uh, two more people to show up.
Alrighty.
Hello?
Dr Luxana, this is Alderman Soler.
Oh, hi, how are you?
I'm doing well, I was wondering if you might have time to swing by the courthouse and have a meeting with me?
Sure, yeah, I can swing by.
Alright, terrific, I'll see you soon.
Okay, see you soon, bye.
It's weird having conversations with people who I just DM'd because like I literally know and they know that they're on to come see me. Okay. Are you here or are you in your head right now, Zeb?
I, I'm here, I'm just looking at this GPS, I'm trying to find eighty sixty-two and I cannot for the life of me find it.
Let me see if I can help. Uh, it's directly south of here, it's just right across the street from Benny's.
Okay, yeah.
It's that, that's gonna be that construction area.
Eighty-one sixty-two, I need eighty-six, I see where it is, I see where it is. Uh, that's the, the big, I think it's the maze building.
Sun Niter, thank you for the eleven months! Zeb?
I'm ready.
Zeb, could you do me a favor and, uh, keep an eye out for Dr Luxana if she comes through the door, she's the last one we're waiting on?
Yeah, I'll stand out there and-
I'm gonna go to the bathroom real quick.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Lieutenant Kingston, please just, uh, have a seat somewhere, mingle, we're waiting on one more person to arrive.
Okay.
Sun Niter, thank you for the tier three eleven months, don't have a lot of time to stay, wanna jump in, show the eleven months of love, uh, say I'm still alive, rather busy, I hope it's a good busy, man. Hope it's a good busy, getting solid work in, making that money, doing something you love, something like that. But either way, it's good to see ya, I appreciate it. Alright chat, I have to go to the bathroom before we get started. So I'm gonna do that, I will be right back. Alright chat, I'm here. Slash me, wash his hands. Say, you can do that in real life and it works, by the way, if you ever get, if you ever like get done at a restaurant, like an Applebee's or something and you just take a huge shit, as long as you stand up and then just go slash me, wash his hands, you're good. Dr Luxana, good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Should I follow you?
Alright, yeah, if everyone, you don't mind making your way into the conference room, uh, we'll wait for Lieutenant Kingston to get done thinking and then we'll be good to go.
Understood, we're not waiting on anyone else?
Nope, go ahead and, uh, have a seat in there. Mr Rockard, are you with me? Uh, we're all meeting in the conference room, Lieutenant Kingston, I'm waiting on, uh, Mr Rockard to get off his phone.
Bra, I can, uh, usher him in there when he gets out of his head.
Sure thing, thank you.
Not a problem.
(cough) Excuse me! Uh, third eye, doctor.
I've been having, uh, trouble with my third eye, so...
Is your third eye still tied to that, that right mouse muscle?
Uh... Excellent, there we go.
Alright, we're still waiting on, uh, Lieutenant Ki- oh, uh, we're still waiting on Dirk Rockard, excuse me. Can everybody hear me at this, uh, volume?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm about, uh, three quarters as loud as I could be, I think it's what we'll need.
Yeah, sorry about that, uh, one of five is gonna be ten six for a little while, radio's gonna be off.
I gotta think about what I'm telling him. So, were any of you guys at that, uh, auction earlier today?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I was auctioned off with Vic.
Oh really, how much you guys go for?
A hundred and one grand.
Have you gone on the date yet?
Uh, not yet, but I have a good idea of what is gonna happen.
Are you excited or scared?
Oh, I'm very excited, I did the same thing last night, so yes, I'm very excited.
Oh boy.
And no, it's not what you're thinking, it's just an escort service, it's not prostitution.
Uh... Alright then. Hold on, I will be right back. Do you think he's okay?
Well, I think he's just kinda stuck in his head at the moment. That'll do.
Um...
He's fine, he's just thinking very hard.
Oh, okay.
I just realized y'all couldn't hear me for like the past forever.
Oh yeah, we can hear you now, thank you.
Thank goodness.
Alderman, are you, are you alright?
Am I alright? Yeah, why?
Yeah, I was just, you're walking around like you're pain.
Uh, no, I just have a slow walk on account of it's been a long day.
Oh, it's right, I, I know all about that, uh, Joey Vic's the same way now.
Yeah, you were telling me about his foot.
Yeah, he, it just, he's just kinda used to it now, so, you know.
Okay.
I ain't gonna judge him for it.
So Dirk is thinking, but if the rest of you guys are ready, I think I'm just gonna go ahead and, uh, get started.
Sure.
No objections?
No objections.
Alright, uh, allow me to be the first to congratulate you, uh, you six, along with Yang Kai, who has emailed me on why he can't make it today, uh, have been chosen to represent the city council, uh, for this town. Given that, on a couple of conditions, before we make it a hundred percent official, you all understand that there will be times we will pull you away, uh, from your busy work schedule, exceptions being medical emergencies and police emergencies, in which case representatives can be sent from, uh, those respective facilities. Uh, you guys are ready and willing to dedicate your time, uh, both when the city is up and occasionally when the city is down in our email chain, to this job. You understand that you need to be capable of putting your personal differences aside, uh, any, you know, uh, beef that you may have with other members of the city in order to properly think about what is best for the city as a whole. And you have to be able to, you have to be willing and able to consider everyone from the city and all potential walks of life when making city council decisions. If you are all able to agree to that, uh, I would happily welcome you all on as our city council.
Agreed.
Absolutely, agreed.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Perfect.
We all like each other here anyway, so...
Yeah, I think so.
I don't make enemies.
Perfect, uh, our first order of business, uh, we're going to try to find a time, either tomorrow or Sunday, uh, preferably when we can all meet, if not everybody can make it, that's understandable, uh, but we're going to have a public meeting and sort of a here-out for the town.
Alright.
Understood.
So, if you guys wouldn't mind throwing me days, uh, we're actually gonna start up our own email chain, uh, very soon, uh, we'll add you guys all into that when it happens, um, but do you guys have any, anything that doesn't work for you over the next two days, any, any times that you can or can't make it for sure?
Uh, tomorrow around dinnertime, I would say four PM Central, so maybe seven PM Central or eight, uh, there's a good chance that both Dirk and myself will be unavailable.
Understood.
Um, for myself, I am just available on those days at this time, is when I will be available.
Okay.
Uh, I actually have jury duty tomorrow, um, for a court case, I think it's seven, I can double check real fast, but, give me one second.
Just, uh, for pure, for pure clarification sake, it's a court case in Los Santos?
It is, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a court case coming up tomorrow.
Oh, perfect.
It's gonna be seven, seven Eastern, so four, Los Santos time?
Understood.
Four Pacific, uh, six-
Yeah, yeah, or, or-
Central, seven Eastern.
Yeah, there you go.
So it's Los Santos, we typically operate, we're currently operating on Pacific daylight.
Yetis do, but...
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, so, four, Los Santos time, I will not be able to make it at that time, until the end of the case.
Uh, Mr Ferrari?
Uh, I'll be free, uh, tomorrow, uh, the day after that.
Alright.
Don't make it.
Ms Wrangler?
Yeah, I got an open schedule, so... I ain't got nothing going on.
Okay, in order for Dr Luxana to make it, we're gonna have to do it later in the day, if not, it looks like we would have to hit before, uh, that court case, because we obviously don't wanna have a public meeting going on or something like that's happening anyway, or we could try to work on Sunday? But again, with Dr Luxana, it would still have to be later in the night.
Yes, Sunday would be like a little bit earlier than this time, um, like, uh, in my head, I work under, uh, Pacific Standard Time, so it would be like probably eight.
Alternatively, if you would be willing to send someone else to represent Pillbox in your place?
Yeah, Sun, it's, Sunday night isn't gonna work, uh, very well for me, so I prefer tomorrow, around this time's fun.
Yeah, tomorrow around this time should be fun, I, I doubt-
My only concern with this time is this is an hour in which the city population tends to be declining and I would like to hit as many people as possible.
Oh, I understand.
If Dr Luxana, and I would still have to check with Mr Kai, but if Dr Luxana would be willing to send another EMS representative, we could possibly hold our meeting not long after the court case, though I don't wanna exhaust the whole town with back-to-back big, you know, happenings like that.
Yeah, I could try to see if anyone else wants to-
We'll, we'll work it out for tomorrow then, uh, either immediately after the court case or closer to now, I think works. Mr Rockard, would a meeting like that work for you?
Uh, yeah, yeah, definitely. Immediately after the court case might interfere with, uh, the plans I have tomorrow around dinnertime, my time.
Actually, actually kinda the same.
Oh, oh, of course, of course, uh-
Uh, closer to like, I would say, uh, nine Central, so about two hours ago?
Yeah. That would work better for me.
No, a hundred percent, that is, uh, something we can totally take into account, like I said, I don't think the city's gonna wanna sit through a court case and then immediately go through a big old town hall meeting, so, that, it works to give them a bit of a break in between.
Yeah.
My apologies for, like, being away, I had, I had four dimensional stuff going on.
No, 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 I understand entirely, I just brought you in here because I didn't want you to feel left out.
Aw, thanks, man.
Uh, in case you didn't hear, we have welcomed everyone in this room and, uh, Mr Yang Kai onto city councilmanship.
Oh yeah, nice, congratulations, everyone.
And we are organizing the first meeting.
Congratulations to you, you too, buddy.
I mean, I'm not being weird, but I've known this for a couple of days, so...
Yeah.
Like, we, like, the DOJ just worked it out, so, there's only like four people that were eligible.
Funnily enough, with the way you guys lined up, everyone on my right is pre-appointed, uh, by their respective facilities and everybody on my left was handpicked, uh, by the higher-ups in town, so, how about that?
Oh, nice, I assume then Yang was the, uh, fourth civilian, Bra?
Yep, that would be him.
Alright, so as far, as far as I'm aware, according to SOP, uh, with MRPD, we're not allowed to hold an elected, uh, government, uh, position, so because I was appointed, it's kind of a loophole, but, uh, from here on out, it probably won't be a PD rep-
Alright, you cut out there, Bra, you, there won't be a PD what?
There won't be a PD representative unless that's amended.
Okay, uh, yeah, we will definitely have a talk and see if we can get that worked out, uh, I'm gonna tell you guys, uh, first priority for this initial public meeting we're gonna have, I don't know fully what to expect, I expect a long line and I expect a lot of people to be requesting businesses, so I'm gonna tell you-
Yes.
I'm gonna tell you the city's-
I already tell you there are.
Alright, I'm gonna tell you the city's current agenda and, and what we're doing in regards to businesses and if anybody has any questions, comments, complaints, feel free to speak up once I'm done, but the current plan is this, uh, our job as a city council is going to be to filter out, uh, the, the bad or less doable ideas, because our construction team is only capable of so much and not every idea is gonna be good, and a lot of ideas are gonna be repeats. And another job of ours is going to be to send those repeat ideas to fill out our current businesses, because you guys have all seen it, we have a big problem right now, uh, Tequila Tony's is not open all the time, uh, you know, a couple of the restaurants in town scattered around are not open twenty-four seven and it gets the city in a bad habit of people don't go there because it's never open, and then it's never open because when they open, nobody goes there unless they tweet it out a bunch, so we're gonna try to send people to fill out those restaurants and places as much as possible, because I would rather have a few restaurants in this city that are completely full and open sunup to sundown, than have a bunch of scattered restaurants that open up periodically, so...
No, that makes sense, dude.
Yeah, it's, it's perfect.
Yeah, that's been something I've been pushing for for a while now.
Bra, quick question, uh, I think at the VU, they had a situation where some people like fell off the employee register, Bra, at somewhere around, you know, fifty employees, is that something that you've heard of or is that probably something that I should like send in through, uh, a form as a, as a concern?
Uh, if the VU had, you said fifty employees were just taken off the roster essentially, am I hearing that right?
Like, they had roughly that many total employees, Bra, and some people were saying that they, for no reason they could tell, they hadn't quit, hadn't been fired, and, and were no longer on the employee list, you know, dude?
Yeah, MRPD had the same issue, we've just been rehiring them.
Yeah, well, but if, if we're gonna be open twenty-four seven, you're gonna need a lot more people than that.
Yeah.
Oh, you're thinking they hit the fifty mark and, and the schedule didn't like that and kicked him out.
Correct, somewhere in that range, Bra, like, it kind of like overflowed, you know?
I, I would, uh, send in the proper files, uh-
Yeah.
In that, in that report email chain we've got, just to make sure they have it on record.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, like, if this is something you've heard of, uh, send it in, I can, but like-
Yeah, so we, we definitely heard about it with the PD, but if, if the consensus is that it might be that that number's kicking them off, I think they would appreciate knowing that at least.
Yeah, and I definitely don't know exactly the number, but it, you know, you see like thirty-seven people like, bought, signed in for the job now, so it's gotta be higher than that, you know?
Yeah, a hundred percent, that is, that is worth sending their way.
Alright, will do, dude.
Alright, another focus of the city, uh, this is a suggestion I got a lot from a lot of people, a lot of very good ideas, uh, we are gonna do our damnedest to try to get a, uh, newcomer facility up and running, uh, as you guys know-
Hell yeah.
The plane flies in and everyone's immediately bussed over to the, uh, the, the apartment complex right next to the Job Center and then they sort of wander out and don't really know what to do with themselves, so-
Oh, what you mean, they immediately get kidnapped or robbed?
That too, it's almost like a welcoming party.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So-
If y'all need a location, I've already shown Mayor Appleseed, like, one of the best locations, I think, for that, it's actually the Hit and Run Coffee Bar and right above it, there's like a big open plaza and it's not far from Alta at all.
How-
No major banks around or, or anything like that.
How far are we talking?
Job Center wouldn't be a bad idea neither.
Like, hold on, let me, let me pull up the GPS.
Yeah, Bra, isn't that like seventy sixty-nine or something like that, dude?
I know where you're talking.
Yeah, it's, um, hold on. It's eighty seventy-three.
Let me have a look here.
So it's just down Vespucci, it's like right there, there's no major banks in the area.
Uh, it's kinda just north of the old Burger Shot, really.
Yeah, yeah, um, it, it's relatively out of the, the hot zone, you know what I mean?
Yeah, dude.
Understood, uh, yeah, we'll scope out the location, I know the one you were talking about was the one I was pulling for, so, we will get that looked into, uh, basically, we're going to need to do what we can, uh, to hire city workers to sort of manage the newbies, uh, if we have any volunteers in here, that, I think it would maybe work for a while, but, uh, passing it off to other people, giving them a job, just people who have been around town for a while who can handle that sort of thing would be fantastic. I also believe we are looking for potential-
What would they be doing?
Uh, showing the newbies, uh, basically showing them how to flex their muscles, helping them with their voice boxes, making sure everything's there, and then once they've kinda gone through like a standard, hey, welcome to town, this is how Los Santos works training, uh, we need tour bus drivers, I would like to set up, uh, a bus system in town, to take newbies around, show them the places, you know, this is the VU, this is Tequila Tony's, this is the courthouse, here's the PD, Pillbox, all that stuff, explain to them where they can get their haircut, where they can get tattoos, everything like that, if we just make a quick round of the city, no need to go up north, I don't think, uh, and just kinda get them acquainted with the town?
I actually spoke with somebody who had that exact idea, her name is Callison and, uh-
Yeah, same dude.
She's a duck lady?
That is exactly what she wanted to do.
Duck lady, Bra, yeah, she really wants to open a tour business like separately, so-
She's been telling everybody about it to you.
Everyone, I think if we could-
She's very motivated.
Upload, upload some of that stuff onto like corporations instead of like-
Yeah.
Public employees, that might even be good.
No, I agree a hundred percent.
I told her initially to shoot to be, uh, like a city worker, because the initial business model, if she's gonna charge newcomers for rides and stuff like that, newcomers don't have a lot of money.
No, they got shit.
She's gonna have to be government-funded at least, to start.
No, a hundred percent.
And then adapt the business later on.
If, uh, any of you guys have your contact info, which it sounds like you do, uh, and you wouldn't mind giving her a call or speaking with her in person, tell her to get her presentation ready, uh, if she can, for Saturday afternoon, if not, we can work out another time, it's no big deal, but if she could have her presentation, like, like the whole idea and concept ready to go, and to ask for government funding and, and, you know, offer to help in that way, uh, on the first town hall meeting, that would be perfect.
Yeah, I can, I can call her right after this and get that done.
I will say, the PD usually tries to send a representative or two, uh, whenever there are new people coming in by the, by the busload, uh, just to help with some of the orientation, so, if we need funding, the PD might be able to chip in to help some of the stores and-
Yeah.
Well, and like relating to the new people, Bra, I've literally been reaching out some of the organized crime and being like, hey, I, could we, I assume you're not doing it, I assume it's honestly mostly randos, but like, even if they were willing to like have a person nearby, dude, or I was considering throwing like some parties or stuff like nearby, if there's like twelve people, that's someone getting kidnapped, go down, but like, clearly we'd rather not have it be that way, like-
Yeah, I don't think it's the gangs, just like-
I don't think so.
The people I know, I don't think they mess with that.
I would personally, I'm, I think another push, and again, open discourse, you guys are city council now, feel free to disagree or, or tell me anything, but I, I'm personally think I'm going to make an attempt to try to get the tour bus and newbie building wherever it may be designated, uh, an entirely off-limits zone.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Similar to like Pillbox, yeah, I'd like that.
Sim, similar to Pillbox, like a, like a law above the law, so to speak.
Right, yeah.
That, that location I gave you, like I said, it's nowhere near hotspot, so banks, uh, convenience stores, there's not even a garage there, so that's completely out of the way, uh, the only thing you'd have to worry about is intercity traffic on chases from police and stuff like that, that's it.
Yeah, I would also- Yeah, I would also like to have the tour bus marked as off-limits as well. We would make it very clear what the bus was and what it was doing, so people knew not to, not to mess with that, but I think, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Here's you could put on it.
Like honestly, uh, Callison, who I think it sounds like a lot of us talked to, said she's actually contacted a lot of the organized groups, so at that point it'd just be like random one-offs.
She's reached out to the, uh.
To everybody.
I know that much.
To everybody. And like the random one-offs, like whether there's a higher power or not, they're gonna do what they're gonna do anyway. Like, they, they just don't even know any better half the time.
Yeah, it's, it's not Yang's fault. He's, he's doing a cop on another character.
Well, and that's why the PD usually tries to show up and say, one, just their presence will usually dissuade the randos from doing the things. Uh, but two, we can also explain to them, I understand what you're trying to do. It is against government policy to actually do what it is you're doing.
This is not the time or the place.
Yeah, there, you can do this, I'll catch you later, but you cannot do this here.
Right. Feel free to hang around, like these people are gonna be around, but yeah, don't do it now.
Hundred percent. Uh, more on the, I'm, this is more of me giving you guys a load on to the current agenda. Again, it's entirely open to the floor, but this is things I gathered from suggestions from people, uh, who interviewed for this job and just where we're wanting to head. The taxi business, uh, much like a lot of the restaurants in town, is a little flaky at the moment. I know their leadership at the top is a bit shaky and their service doesn't quite work as squeaky clean as it could. So we've got the construction crew working on that, but we're looking to appoint, uh, a new boss, hopefully in that area who will be able to handle a little bit better. So we're also trying to drive people to be taxi drivers as well, because, uh, having those guys around is extremely helpful to new players on top of it.
That's something I've told people to do. I'm like, go apply to be a taxi, because I, I interact with a lot of new people, dude. Like, they come up to me, talk to me, they hear me, they hear me show, doing a show. And they're all like, I tried, and they can't get a job for whatever reason. Or the few taxis I do, the people who like get a job, they're like, no one ever calls a taxi, and I think those go hand in hand, because there aren't enough drivers when people call when they don't get one. But I also think people don't know about it. I know.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be an issue is like, people don't know that they have to think about taxi, they just.
Or that it's free.
Call the number on their phone.
Yeah, we put up signs, because I honestly, I feel like that's like the best way for people to get a taxi.
I, I tend to put up signs over at Benny's as well, but like, you know, most people come to Benny's are, uh, already owned a car.
I wonder if we could replace a bunch of billboards in town with like actual taxi company info?
Well, what I was thinking is, is wherever we have, uh, the, the new people flown into or bussed into, we have some permanent signs, uh, on the wall that explain like the basics.
So.
That'd be a good idea.
Some of the major muscles and how to call a taxi, and then the rest can kind of be explained on the tour.
This is why I actually would prefer if we had a person or two there to greet new people, especially during high-end hours, so.
Like a, like a, like a.
Liaison.
Yeah.
Like I said, the MRPD will, will generally always supply one person to go there, just to make me.
But it'd be nice, brah.
Yeah, but also we need our cops on the streets.
Well, and we can employ more people this way, dude.
Oh my god, we're city council. Yeah, government money is, is pretty okay at the moment, so if we need to, uh, if we need to shell out for extra stuff, we can, we can definitely afford to do that. Get people in there, you know? And it'd only have to be during high hours and then we could leave it to signs for the stragglers if we needed to.
Just note too, if you need, like, if, I'm not, I, I'm not trying to say the government's pockets aren't deep or anything, but real estate can help with that too, so.
Yeah, a lot of people buying houses these days.
We, we got limited funds.
Zeb, if you're giving away money, like, um, you know, I could use some, dude.
Well, now, now listen, it's a charitable contribution for fleet vehicles or something like that.
Yeah, I'm trying to buy several houses, leave me alone.
I'm trying to buy a house. Zeb, give me a cut, huh?
You, you get a, you get a government cut, you get ten percent off.
Yeah, but it still went up thirty-five percent.
What I'm hearing is we need to open more real estate agencies.
Oh, yeah, rival agencies.
Hey, there, there's a thought, um, having people own apartment complex buildings themselves.
Landlords would be nice.
Yes, that's not bad.
Yeah, everybody always loves their landlord. Uh, it's something, while, while, while we're here, I've kind of ran through the standard list of the most stuff that I was told about and, and recommended. So if you guys have any more ideas that I didn't name off here that we could potentially put on the list, uh, it's almost like a mini city council hearing now, so I can hear from you guys before we go on to the public stuff.
I, I would rather let the public talk first.
Yeah, I, I wanna hear what they have to say and then.
Because a lot of us know a lot of people with a lot of great ideas and I don't want any of us to steal the thunder of any of them. I want them to have a fair chance, uh, unbiased.
This is a clever way to make it look really smart.
Okay, so a small explanation of how these public meetings are going to work initially and then going forward. You might see me take up the mantle for the majority of, or for a large part of this first meeting and maybe the second, but eventually my ideas that you guys, and I'm gonna be learning as we do it too, but we all sort of get an idea how the public hearings are go, how they should be structured, you know, when we allow certain things and how we debate certain things and learning things like, is this business a good idea? Okay, it is a good idea. Is it possible with our construction crew or do we think it could be possible? Is it worth asking? Okay, we'll, we'll pass it along or no, it's not, but it's gonna be a lot of, of learning, so if I take the reins in the beginning, that's kind of the plan, but my idea is that I will slowly wean off until you guys no longer need me at all.
Uh, that's understood.
That makes sense. Like I said, for this, for this first couple of meetings, we're all gonna be learning together. I don't know how many, uh, complaints, suggestions, requests we're gonna be getting. I imagine it's gonna be a line out the door, uh, given how often the higher government gets messages, but we'll see, we'll see. It's gonna be a big, gonna be a big learning process. I think it might be best to save the businesses for last, like business requests, and that way everyone who's not interested in requesting their own business or anything can, you know, make their way out the door after they've made their case and made their suggestions and everything.
Yeah, agreed.
That's, yeah, because the businesses is gonna be ninety percent of this.
Yeah, I have a feeling there's gonna be a lot of questions targeted at the MRPD, so I expect to talk a lot.
A lot, a lot of that, a lot of businesses, a lot of can I get a hunting license?
Most, there's gonna be a lot of license talk.
Are we in charge of licenses now?
I believe I might possibly be as part of the DOJ.
Oh, uh, I'm actually glad you brought that up. On top of city counseling when our meetings are scheduled, uh, I would like to have one of our members, if possible, uh, at least one of our members, fill the gaps for courthouse. I'm not saying the courthouse needs to be open twenty-four seven, but I'm saying if you see people tweeting about, hey, is the courthouse open? If one of us.
I would volunteer.
I was gonna say.
Here too, I mean, I'm in city all the time, so.
The only.
Dirk is always in and also part of the DOJ, so I'm okay with either of them.
I'm literally already in there on it.
The, the only issue, the, the only issue I'm running into with this that I have to, I have to run by, uh, the construction workers is you need an MDT, from what I understand, to check to see if someone is a felon or not. And if they're a felon, you can't give them a gun.
Correct, and so I do work for, I'm a public defender, brah, and I've been told by the, the judge was talking about, he is looking at getting people who actually currently work for the DOJ to have access to the MDT, so like, uh, clearly that's not maybe like the ideal way, but like I may already be in the path to circumvent like issues with that, you know what I mean?
Until that's done, uh, because I have access to an MDT already, um, I can fill in that role.
It, it could be you or we could simply, if people are tweeting about the courthouse, we could simply walk down to the PD or give them a call and say, hey, we need one officer with an MDT or one of the dispatch or something like that. Anybody who's free really could come down. Or if, if you were to handle it yourself, uh, Mr. Kingston, either one.
I, I can do that or, or, uh, I mean, our dispatch has MDT, they can go to the lobby and apply there.
Dude, that's what I was gonna say, brah, it's like.
As long as we have clear guidelines as to when, whether or not, and, and they, they're approved, then, yeah.
I, I'd like, I literally could just like say like, hey, like text me, a group's gonna meet at the PD and we're like brief y'all, or like run through y'all there, dude, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to like help.
Yeah.
But I don't have any kind of access to anything.
Yeah, I don't have MDT access or anything.
It's one of those like.
That, okay, so my.
Large-scale stuff, y'all gotta do.
My thought process with how the city works with jobs and things like that is, and Zeb, stop me if you have too many on the list already, but if everyone would be willing to add another job to that list, because this, uh, will be a paying job going forward, is what I'm pulling for. We don't have anything concrete yet, but I'm, I'm still in high hopes. This will be, you know, we'll all be assigned jobs, we'll get a paycheck for this, everything. We'll have that.
Now, I can cycle one out, so.
I only got one.
I've, I've got room.
Okay, so we, we would be able to F4, check into this job, and then when we flex our F4 muscle and go on duty here, we might be able to get the voter to give licenses. And then all we would need to do is meet down at MRPD with anybody who wanted one and they check the MDT to make sure they weren't a felon and then we could give them a guns license if that's what they wanted and go from there.
Or, or even radio, if we can, if, if, uh, if we can get access to frequency two on the radio to page dispatch, uh, to ask if they're a felon.
I mean, realistically, uh, a role like you're talking about, like some sort of a job, brah, like seems like the clearest way to do it. Like for a variety of reasons, like if we need to get into the courthouse, if we needed to get at the PD for, you know, we can see the dispatcher, but maybe they're in their head, like, that, that seems like the best way.
Alright, and the last.
Like, oh, go ahead, dude. I have a question when we're done, go ahead.
I was gonna say, one more thing, uh, we might have to be aware of is obviously not everybody is going to be able to make our town hall meetings, um, especially, you know, there's a lot of people who can't get on during prime hours, even if we do hit prime hours every day. Uh, so for those people who have, may have good ideas, but they might not be in town at the most convenient times, uh, there might be mini meetings, uh, for things that might be deemed, I don't wanna say less important, but maybe it, it wouldn't require every member of city council.
I'd be more than willing, like, more than happy to just like post up here and listen to people talk sometimes too, you know?
Yeah, I, I think if, if we got a couple of people in town, maybe where we see Twitter buzzing and like, oh, you know, I really need to speak to city council and we could bring in, as, I think as long as we have there's seven members total, not including me, as long as we had four people present from city council and, you know, they, everybody trusts everybody and they trusted that they didn't need consultation from, from more city council members, we could probably make decisions on the fly like that as well. But it comes with part of the job of you guys, you know, being able to get pulled away from your work at, at a moment's notice if something like that comes up.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just very beneficial with my work, because I'm always everywhere, like I am everywhere at all times, so I could be pulled away or, I mean, if, if I'm out in the field and I can talk with people and settle any questions or anything like that there, I absolutely will, because I almost, I have had at least ten people a day ask me about businesses and stuff like that, just as I'm out and about selling houses or, you know, working at the casino and stuff.
Well, now you can direct them to the town hall city council meetings.
Yeah.
Uh, my idea for the meetings, I know I just mentioned the public one because that's the first one we're going to do, but starting next weekend, I would like to have a private meeting with you guys and it can be in one group or two or three if we can all get together at one time. It's not a big deal. Uh, but I would like to have a private sit-down meeting with you guys where we sit and discuss things that we wanna work on, uh, going forward, uh, more specifically in that upcoming weekend. Uh, and then we try to shoot for our public town hall meetings on either Saturday or Sunday, and then that's where we hear from the city and then that gives us a little city shutdown time to sort of get those in order, talk it over with the construction workers, talk it over with the government, see what's possible, what isn't. And then if they show up again next meeting, we can tell them how their request is going, if it's possible, and, and give all the details on that. That's, that's the layout. I don't know, like I said, I'm winging this as much as you guys are. I don't know how it's gonna go, but that's, that's the current idea.
Sure. We, we got a framework going. We're gonna build on it and see what it ends up looking like.
Yep, that is the exact concept. Okay, back to o, open floor. Suggestions, questions, anything?
Alright, brah, so I have a concern, dude. Uh, just a quick question. If we're doing like city council business, like a meeting or something like this, dude, uh, we walk out, you know, we finish our meeting, brah, we walk outside, someone pulls a gun, goes, get in my truck, dude. Because we were doing city council business, like, would we be exempt from some of that type of thing or would it be like, alright, it's, it'd be what it be, you can have a politician?
If you are on your way to a meeting and you need to be at the city council meeting, I am going to fight for an exemption in that. If the meeting just ended and you walked back out on the street, you're fair game.
Okay.
But they cannot request that you do anything for city council, if that makes sense.
That was the other half of the question.
Yeah.
Is if someone calls me and says, I want a license, and I show up and they go, and now you're my victim, and I'm like.
Yeah, they, they can't pull people in and be like, you have to help me open up my pet grooming shop or something like that. That's, that's a big no-no.
Like, you know, this is a problem with the taxis, dude. They call a taxi, they kidnap the taxi person, dude.
Yeah, I've heard that a lot.
Yeah, it happens a lot. It's, it's called a hostage on demand. Like, literally, they, they have a name for it. So like, if someone's like, brah, I want to get a hunting license, man, like meet me at, but the courthouse. So like, I think you kind of answered it when you said like, if you're on your way to business, you're good. Like, if you're conducting business, you're good, brah. So like, if they called me, I showed up and they're like, I'm gonna kidnap you, it'd be like, no, that, that's not how that works.
Uh, in regards to the taxis, Lieutenant Kingston, I have an idea. I don't, again, and I have to run it by the workers, I don't know how possible it is, but tell me if this sounds like a bad idea. What if we gave taxi drivers, and we would make it very clear, this is only for when they're inside their taxi driving someone, what if we gave taxi drivers a panic button similar to the one that police have?
I mean, that could work. Um, the problem is panic buttons doesn't mean an instantaneous, uh, response. We're gonna do our best to get there as quick as possible. But that would be certainly a step up to let them, because I, we don't hear about it until after the fact, until they're already hostage at some fleek of bank out in Sandy. So that would be a step up, for sure. I don't think it would be unreasonable to see that.
I think because.
Having, oh, sorry.
Well, with the way that, with way I understand the panic button works, they might be able to hit this thing multiple times, so if the guy gets in the car, pulls out a gun, panic button, you know, drives a mile down the road, panic button, until he gets to where he's going. You think, you think that was something that could help the situation? That way we don't have to try to completely make taxis off-limits entirely, but it, it saves them a little bit from just being an on-demand hostage.
I mean, if we could make the panic button more like a, a live GPS tracker thing, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, just have it as like.
Like for two minutes or something like that, um, uh, kind of like when you use your phone and you, and you hit the, the, the nine-one-one, um, and you just kind of set up a beacon. Um, cause when, when a, when a panic hits, the, uh, all PD forces, whether they're, um, Highway Patrol, BCSO, or, uh, LSPD, we all stop what we're doing unless it's incredibly important and we go and investigate and try and help out. So if that's the case, uh, and a, a taxi driver has a panic button, we're, we're all gonna drop what we're doing and try and help out, but if we're light, if we only have two officers on duty, or one, or none, I mean, you know, there's only so much that we can do.
Right, right. So does it give you, the panic buttons give location on panic?
Uh, it gives GPS. Um, it does not, uh, I've only received it, uh, when people are still alive or, or at least conscious. Um, so, uh, I don't think it tracks, but having it, uh, track via GPS, uh, would be the ideal situation.
Okay.
Maybe update every ten to fifteen seconds.
And they, they would get their own buttons where you guys would be notified. It's taxi driver probably getting held hostage, so not everybody would have to drop, but everybody would be aware, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, you, you'd have to figure that out. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know if it's, if it's set to a frequency or not. I'm not sure the, you know, rules of it, but, uh, I'm, I'm all for some kind of alert system for, uh, you know, some of the public servants, which I consider taxi drivers because they're funded by the government, uh, to be. Uh, I'm all for making sure they stay safe and giving them some way to, uh, defend themselves or to, uh.
It'd be nice to give them some peace of mind.
Yeah, exactly.
I know that they've been kind of complaining about that lately.
Yep.
Yeah, no, they definitely have, brah, like, a lot of new people coming to town become taxi drivers and then they're like, okay, I mean, I'm making money, but I'm also getting kidnapped every day.
Yeah.
Same thing with like Johnny and.
Man, Johnny like causes many of his own problems, though.
We, we could play around with the idea more. It's just, again, spitballing for things we can do to help out taxi drivers.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I, I think, I think it's worth the conversation.
I think, I think it's a good idea to mention it, but I also think, you know, a taxi cab driver is about the same as, you know, any other citizen. They're public servants, they're helping out. But, uh, you know, maybe we don't wanna, you know, spend too much on, you know, giving them all, you know, UAV trackers of their position for two minutes.
That's, so, as.
That'd be a little much.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, because, again, in my understanding of the way the panic button works, it's very, very easy to hit. They put it in a discreet spot, so this is a button that, you know, they would be able to tap multiple times if they were being driven to a bank or something like that, is, is my thought process, so. I, I can, I can ask about the trackers.
Hide behind their back and they won't be able to reach it.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. Well, again, we can, we can have more conversations about this. Uh, one more thing, I guess, while we're here. Uh, Kingston, uh, Vincent Ferrari, Vincent Ferrari, Kingston, uh, you guys are on opposite ends of the table here. I understand you guys are probably well aware of each other. Uh, I gave it the speech initially, personal differences aside, and everybody on this council needs to understand that we are looking for a balance, uh, in the city, a balance that fits in, in a world where civilians can live without getting kidnapped and shot every day and criminals can live and do their thing and police, uh, can live and, you know, be there to stop criminals and also hopefully not get shot every day. Uh, everybody needs everybody in order for this, uh, you know, this world to exist and thrive, so just keep everybody in mind when you're doing your things and I just wanted to point you two out specifically because I know you guys are sort of on, on opposite ends of this, and that's on purpose. We specifically made sure Mr. Ferrari was in here and we had a police representative because we want balance in this town.
Well, and honestly, I think, I think between, uh, Vince and myself, we have enough of a, uh, you know, enough of an understanding and communication with each other that we respect each other's opinions and we are both relatively level-headed, given the side of the law that we generally tend to represent.
Perfect, perfect.
Um, would you agree, Vince?
I can agree, I can agree.
Honestly, I had to say, like, as a person not actually involved in any potential to like direct conflict, I was really glad to see that you two were the people like relating to those situations who are here. Like, I'm like, if we can talk it out, you two are the ones who I think are most capable of doing it.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. I, I do have one question. Um, reelections, or, or assuming that you're allowed to, uh, as, as a police, if we always want a Pillbox and a police officer representative, um, are we up for reelections or is it like every single time it switches up? So we always have fresh blood.
It would, it would be, uh, an amendment thing. We actually would need to sit down and talk about, preferably another time, because we have a little while before something like that comes up.
Sure.
I, and this is a personal take, again, it's, it's up to anybody, but I would like it if there was like insider elections, I guess, so everybody voted on who they wanted to be their rep. Um, and this time it was a rush job. I just gave it to the people at the top and I said, you know, uh, do an election if you want, pick, pan-pick him yourself, talk with who you wanna talk with, but like, send, send me somebody and then as long as they're a fit, we'll run with them.
So what do you mean, like an insider election, brah?
So you're a representative from the DOJ. I understand you guys kind of did it, an insider election. You talked it out and decided that you would be the best one.
I mean, yeah, yeah, we did.
Yeah, Kingston is from the police department. Uh, I told Chief Runner. Yeah, I I I told Chief Runner, I said, Chief Runner, just pick somebody. And I don't know what he did exactly, but he ended up with Kingston.
Of the entire high command, pretty much everyone sergeant plus and had a vote for people that wanted to.
Yeah, there you go. But yeah, if if the whole PD, like, let's just say, uh, you know, anybody above a parole officer and higher got to vote on it, you know, if you want to do that, that's totally possible, but that's, I think that's a bridge we can cross a little bit later down the line. Uh, the current plan is to have elections for this position and sheriff every two months going forward. Uh, if that schedule seems, you know, reasonable to people, two months, uh, too long, too short, anybody have any complaints?
I think that's reasonable.
No, that seems about right.
Currently, that's definitely reasonable.
Okay, and the last order of business I have, again, we can still open up the floor to comments and suggestions. The last order of business I have, we need to figure out a sheriff because Sheriff Barrow has turned in his badge and resigned at least temporarily and the city is without one. So I would like to have get sheriff selections up and going. Uh, we can, I understand it's been leaked to the city already, but we can officially announce that this week. And do you guys think the end of next weekend would be a long enough time to campaign and for people to get their votes in?
Uh, I would say Sunday next weekend should be enough.
That being said, like
Yeah.
You know, not trying to like say like, oh, we should like move it forward because of who's running, brah, but like, if God is running, I kind of feel like there's not many people on the PD other than like Kingston here. If you decided you wanted to be sheriff for some reason or like there are like walker runner who are going to be God. Yeah, not in qualifications, just in like the what what is the public going to vote for, dude?
Yeah, and I mean, the thing is, any any full-time police officer can run to be sheriff and it's up to the public to ask the right questions.
Exactly.
Uh, some people have the charisma, uh, but don't have the experience or the the, you know, the grit behind them. Some people have uh, so much experience but have no charisma such as Manley. He would make a terrible sheriff.
That's what I was gonna say, like the only, literally the only other person, and I don't even think Manley wants the job.
No, he he does not, specifically does not.
I've literally heard him say he does not want to be, he might be like assistant or whatever, but he doesn't want to be in charge.
No, he wants as little to do with, he he wants to be out on the highway hiding behind bushes and fully
Right.
That's Manley's life.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, normally, I think definitely we should give it like more of a delay, but honestly, we probably should follow the normal format anyway then. I was just saying
I I would like, let's just say
Try to get it filled.
Let's just say nobody really can really stand up to, uh, Mr. Bounty Hunter, right? If even if anybody else runs, I think this would be a very, very good test drive for baby's first election.
Oh, there you go.
In the sense that it hasn't happened for the town yet, we can organize debates, people can, you know, we can prepare questions, people can go up and uh, a- ask their questions, uh, fueled it by the public, you know, everyone can sort of voice their opinions on that and we can sort of get an idea of how this should go. And then that way, two months from now, when sheriff and city council are up for election and reelection, uh, we'll be able to step in and have a little bit better idea of how this stuff's going to play out.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I mean, I I don't have a problem with that. I didn't plan on running for sheriff simply because of the city council thing, but wouldn't that be a conflict of interest?
Uh, I would suspect, it's like a localized power interest, yeah.
I I think holding two elected positions is probably a no-go.
Yeah, yeah. Well, one one elected, one appointed, but it's the same ultimately.
So I, and that's the main reason I'm not going to run for sheriff at all.
I also understand the PD's, uh, we have to iron that out because the PD's policy of not being in an elected position, but sheriff is an elected position, so you have to be a cop for it. Yeah, but we'll we'll get all that ironed out.
Uh, yeah, so we'll, I would say get in contact with the chief runner about that and we'll have him and the gods and the high command kind of help and get that sorted out.
Okay, so this election is still going to feel very fast-tracked, I think. Uh, if we would like, we can announce it at tomorrow afternoon's meeting, whenever that ends up happening.
Yeah, I think I'd say
Yeah, I would say we should announce it and make sure everyone knows what's going on.
And tell them they can
Official.
Tell them they can begin campaigning immediately and that votes will be tallied, uh, the following Sunday. Uh, and we'll be able to handle, let's just say people can't make it in town on Sunday, we should be able to handle out of town votes, uh, over shutdown, I think, would be possible.
I I would say
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The campaign, so yeah, sorry about that. The the campaigning ends, um, next Sunday, that's when is the uh, the public vote and then um, the the sheriff will be appointed at the opening of the city following whatever day it is, whether it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Let me think about that.
No, that works.
Everyone a couple days off to uh, to passively, uh, put in their votes.
So vote, voting precinct, I'm assuming that's the courthouse, correct?
Uh, yeah, I mean, unless we can think of a better place for it.
Well, would discordia be better for those that can't necessarily enter the city but have an absentee vote?
We're going to need to appoint a counter, but I would like for, for the sake of the town, everybody who's in town on Sunday that wants to vote should be able to come down to the courthouse. Uh, they'll come in and then they can probably discordia their message over to whoever is counting their ballot.
Yeah.
And all of our ballot counters can tally up at the end of the day for who was there and then absentee ballots can come in, you know, trickle in the following days. And we can have one or two appointed absentee ballot counters.
If I might recommend at least a person, brah, I know, uh, Gurney Abel was interested in being involved in a lot of things. He definitely has several other stuff going on. He's definitely a respected member of the community.
Yeah.
I see you, Tarek.
I think any, no one would suggest that Gurney Abel is like corrupt.
If you can do that and it can't be gamed, I'm all for it.
He's one of the most honest people.
I don't know why people would game it, but if you can do it and it can't be gamed, I'm all for it.
I think honestly he'd be honored. It would purely be a, does he have time to do it? But like, if we needed someone to count ballots or something, I can't think of many people higher on the list who I'd recommend, dude.
No, I actually would also like Gurney inside of our, uh, rooms during these meetings if he can be there. Um,
Well, yeah, he is the DOJ scribe as well, so he's already
Yeah, no.
On some of that kind of stuff.
Also, we may want to, unrelated, but we may want to get someone from the scene in every once in a while to fill in just so they can kind of, uh, reassure the citizens that that we're doing our job.
Do any of you guys have a
Keep us honest.
Do any of you guys have a an relationship with the scene?
I do. Every single person.
We all know them.
Yeah, pretty much all of us.
Okay, as long as somebody could contact somebody from the scene before our meetings and make sure they're coming down. Uh, and then also if they let them know that if they ever want a private meeting with the council, we can let them know what our private meetings are and then they can come in and ask any questions they may have before or after we do our meetings.
Sounds good.
Uh, one more thing, do we have any volunteers? And it would probably be best if a few of you guys had access to this. Do we have any volunteers to someone who would want to run a city council, uh, Twitter account?
That is not me.
Don't everybody jump at once.
I am incredibly busy, especially with real estate, so I I could
Dirk, I would, I would nominate you just because when you're DJing, you have free time, but
You know, it seems like that. I do a lot of legal work while I'm DJing.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, okay, yeah.
I mean, I don't mind doing it. I'm not the greatest Twitter person in the world, but
No, but everyone
Even have it like as a team effort, too.
Yeah, what if we all did it?
Yeah.
We could just all do it. Like, I don't know that we need like one manager for it, dude.
Yeah, it basically is somebody to either, you know, send the text to, hey, we want this tweeted out from the account. Or like I said, if we all have access to the username and password, obviously do not give this out to anybody.
Yeah, I mean, clearly.
Yeah.
And and that includes any body cam footage you might have.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. Uh, quick, quick question about some of that kind of stuff. Is there going to be a discordia city council?
Yes, yes, I mentioned that when you were still in your mind, but uh, as soon as we're adjourned here, I'm going to set up
Was meditating.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm going to set up a a, an email chain for us, uh, everyone in this room specifically, plus Mr. Kai.
So I think if there was like a Twitter type of thing, like what should we send out, what did we send out? Like, I I think we could kind of all make it work.
Yeah, we could probably organize it through that.
Yeah, I think that would be safest, too.
That'd be the best way.
Hundred percent.
Agreed.
No, that works. Uh, yeah, and then we just be tweeting out like things like first official city council meeting tomorrow afternoon. We'll we'll narrow down the time. Uh, one more time, uh, Kingston and Mr. Rockard, when were you guys free-ish?
Uh, so tomorrow at around four to five central, I'm going to be busy for about three to four hours, kind of depending. It's it's pretty loose right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. I'm the same time zone.
If we can convert that to, if we can convert that to Pacific daylight, just because everybody's in Los Santos, I think it just makes it easier.
Yeah, fair enough, dude.
That's a, uh, two to three PM until I would say, what, maybe, uh, five to six PM Pacific?
I would, yeah.
Yeah, so so between two and six PM, uh, Pacific, daytime.
Would we say seven, seven thirty is probably a safe time to announce city council meeting?
To announce, yeah.
Well, to to announce that it's happening, it would happen at seven thirty-ish, is that
I think I think we can make that happen. I think Dirk and I can work together.
Yeah, we can, we can make that work, dude.
Okay.
I think it'd be fine for me, too, because that that court case should be over by then.
What time does that court case start?
Uh, four.
All right, what time?
I hope to God it's over by then.
Yeah.
Don't announce it until tomorrow. If you've got the Twitter up and going, Miss Wrangler.
In EST, in EST.
EST, so
Because EST is confusing.
We said seven thirty, so it'd be ten thirty EST.
Nolan's shaking somewhere. Wherever Nolan is, he's he's pissed because it's not Eastern Standard right now, it's Eastern daylight.
Yeah, seven, seven PST is ten EST, so if we're aiming for seven to seven thirty Pacific as Los Santos time, it would be ten to ten thirty Eastern time.
Yeah.
And, uh, once again, Dr. Lexon, I'm sorry you can't make it, but if you could find somebody.
I mean, I could like, it would be tight, like I could try, like eight would be
You, you are are more, we could back it up to eight, eight might be more convenient.
Yeah, well.
Uh, you are also more than welcome to walk in a little late.
Okay, I think, I think maybe, yeah, start at seven thirty and I think I'll just walk in late, like I can
Knowing gatherings like this, brah, there's going to be fifteen to twenty minutes of preamble.
Yeah, if we say seven thirty, we're not actually going to start till eight.
I don't know if any of you are giant nerds like I am who play D and D, like you show up at seven thirty, you're going to play at eight ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, roughly. I mean, honestly, that's how every party works out.
Correct.
I'm not sure
People like to be late.
I'm, I'm not sure I've ever been on time to anything in my life, so I understand that. Uh, okay, are are we square here? Any more questions, concerns?
I do have one question. Uh, tomorrow, when, uh, let's say it is a a close friend or a personal relationship or family member, uh, should be abstained from voting on something?
Uh,
What do you mean, dude?
Well, like, let's say, for exam, example, my my brother Beef decides that he wants to propose a business idea. Obviously, he's my brother and I want to support him. Will I just say I have to abstain because of XYZ or should I vote anyway?
So this, this is going to be a feeling out process, but I initially imagined that we aren't going to vote on a lot of these topics on the floor amongst ourselves. I think we're going to write them down and then just like, maybe decide if they're worth the worth to pass along or not right then and there, but I think most of these, we're just simply going to take them down and like, let them know we can either immediately deny them or decide that we'll discuss it later.
Uh, it's like a filter process.
Yeah, al- also, but i- if we do end up coming down to these sort of things, I think unless we cut, unless we see a problem with this in the future, if any of you guys disagree, feel free to let me know, but I think it comes with part of the job that you need to be able to separate the two as best you can.
Uh, well, it it's two-part, right?
If if you don't
To be able to separate myself, but I also need to be able to trust everyone else to separate themselves, so that that's the main reason why I'm asked.
Right, if you don't think you can separate, like you just don't want to put a strain on on the relationship with your brother or anything like that, you can. It's up to you if you want to abstain. You can abstain from the vote.
Understood.
But I'm I'm going to leave the trust in you guys for this. We, uh, wouldn't have brought you on here if we didn't trust you.
Mm-hmm. No, appreciate that. Uh, quick question. I obviously was, you know, meditating and out of it from the beginning of it. It sounds like there's going to be a meeting tomorrow. What's up?
Oh, man.
We're we're talking about the time. I I get that.
Yeah, it's it's a public meeting, uh, the entire town is going to be there. We're going to basically sit there. They're going to come up with questions and podiums and business proposals and stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, we're just going to go ahead and talk and discuss.
Just a heads up, all these, all these meetings are recorded. We got cameras in here. So if you ever miss anything, I can send, I can send you the footage as well.
Hey, that's perfect.
Honestly, I think the summary he just gave is like, cool, like that's kind of what I assumed. I was just like checking and like, also, dude, is that chair not like wildly too big? How are you comfortable sitting in that leather monstrosity?
Uh, it's only comfortable with you lean, when you lean back, which I can't do because it would look silly, so.
Okay, I was, I was just asking. I'm like, you you look, not being rude, you look so tiny. You're like a guy in the Iron Throne, you know what I mean?
Yeah, the the chair was not made for me, I'll say that much.
These chairs are just not comfortable on this side.
No, these are horrible.
I'm pretty sure, so, so
The table?
If you guys look around at some of these paintings, uh, we have around here, these are like from, I don't know, the fourteen hundreds or something, forever ago, seventeen hundreds, whatever. I'm pretty sure some of these chairs are in those paintings. These chairs are old.
Oh, they've been in this spot for hundreds of years, dude.
They've been around
My crotch is pressed against this thing uncomfortably.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you
Uh, one more thing I want to organize.
And yes.
Yeah.
Well, oh, God, I almost fell over. One more, one more thing I want to organize, if y'all wouldn't mind following me.
You know what's funny? It's like
I did have a question about the Twitter account.
Uh, yeah, yeah, what do you got?
Is that going to be specifically for like events and stuff like that or announcements only or we need to like hold good PR and whatnot?
What else do you think we would use it for?
Whatever the citizens ask.
Uh, I I think for now, we just keep it to announcing, like, hey, you know, we we see a couple of people chatting. I wish the city council was up. I wish the courthouse is open. We'll tweet it out. Hey, courthouse is open, you know, come meet us down here. Uh, we need to decide how, because I don't want to use the conference room for public meetings. I want to use this room. I don't think we have a better room in town for this sort of thing, not publicly. So we need to decide, uh, how this is going to work. Um, we do have more than enough juror seats if we wanted to sit over here, but we'd be facing the public kind of awkwardly. Alternatively, uh, we could all stand.
Probably stand, dude, I think.
Yeah, I think I think just standing in a line in front of the
And that allows us to like have like attitudes that reflect like our position on it, you know what I mean?
So And then it allows people to walk up to like right here and like use the microphone and address us.
So the scribe can sit in any one of these chairs and get it, get the full
Well, we'll, we'll let, we'll let Gurney sit in the big chair in the back. I like that.
Hell, yeah, Gurney would fucking like that, man.
We can get the scene people over here behind the camera.
Yeah, behind, well, the camera is not going to remain, I'm told, because this is not fucking Judge Judy.
Well, I mean, a lot of this stuff is is public record and and
Public record, yes, there's not a giant fucking like court TV camera there.
Well, I mean, that, you know.
It's, but we could get someone operated. It's better we record these things anyway.
I have three questions. All right, we have a lot of like really old Renaissance art and then we have whatever the fuck that is, that is, and that is.
Okay, so we're looking at, that is, uh, clearly somebody reading a book. We have objection over there. That's lawyer stuff. That's typical. And then that is, uh, I believe that's a a hamster who's been jailed, which fits the scene a bit. And then we also have a lot of really old white guys.
Yeah, I don't see the problem.
No, this, this made sense to me, like, I
Oh, I know they're from the Bronze there. I don't know how to tell them that.
This ship painting was in here. What does ships have to do with court, dude?
Maritime law, buddy.
I was gonna say, is this maritime law?
Yeah, it's maritime law.
Are we sovereign citizens, dude?
We're not sovereign citizens.
They were, we're not. They were all put down.
That's the closest thing to sovereign.
That's what I'm getting at, dude. That that should be taken down with, like, to avoid implications.
Also, to anyone who I guess maybe newer in town, again, I I'm newer in town myself. I just read this in the file. These are, uh, these are Bronze era paintings. So they are from the initial first wave of our first judge.
Oh.
That clears anything up for anybody.
It does not, but I'm I'm cool.
No, it uh, it does actually for me a lot, so.
Yeah, that that is, uh, in in honor of our first judge, the first judge of Los Santos we had here.
All right, I've talked to the current judge about this, huh?
That is, uh, Judge Caterina King.
Oh, King, yeah, okay. I I never actually interact, I only interacted with her once, so.
Yeah, so Plan A B, we stand up here and then whoever is talking or speaking for city council can walk up there and or alternatively, anyone who wants to come up and speak on behalf of the people can either sit or stand up in front of us and we can sort of address them directly. Uh, we might be able to work on getting these chairs. I I don't know how possible this is. Might be able to work on getting these chairs moved over here so we could sit, maybe a little higher up, but no, I I think this will work out just fine.
No, I think we can stand. I think
I think standing gives us a certain amount of authority of like, you're
I think it gives us like authority, but also approachability.
Yeah.
Because you do have to be approachable. We're like working with everybody in Los Santos.
Like you stand, you lean a little bit, like make yourself like, you know, I'm human, look at this, I'm human.
Do I look approachable?
Never.
No, no, Zep, you never do.
You give it like an idle three or something like, oh, I'm hot, don't worry about it.
Uh, one more thing, do you guys think, uh, this is something we should attempt to and be handling ourselves? Do you think, uh, we might want to grab ourselves a secretary?
Yeah.
Uh, if we get a secretary, I think we should ask Gurney and if not Gurney, um, I know Howell's really interested and uh, likes to take notes.
My other, literally the other person, you know, I was like, would we recommend for anything? It'd be Hallelujah.
Yeah, and you know, I, th- this is why I was asking her that because, you know, clearly I'm in a relationship with her, so I'm a little biased, but I I I know she was interested, she wants to be involved and she's reliable and unbiased. Honestly, she doesn't like the cops either, so it's not like she's going to do any good for me.
Well, I I mean, I I like the Gurney choice, but again, like when he's in town, he can do it and that's fantastic, but I don't know how often Gurney's in town, so somebody like Hallelujah would be
Hal is definitely always in the city.
Hal is in town more than anyone else.
Pretty sure she literally has lived here more than anyone else.
That, that that might actually be perfect. She wouldn't have to stay on site or anything. She's, you know, be ready to give us a ring if we needed it or, or, you know, put it in our
Yep. Yep. And, 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 you know, obviously that, that's also gonna require like a, a, a job, you know, an F-four job, so that she can get paid for her work.
Especially if there's some sort of industry, brah, that we're like all hired under. Clearly, there are several jobs that could be in there. So like, yeah, you could just hire as the scribe or whoever it be. I don't know necessarily how that works, but if it works the way every other job does, like that seems the obvious choice.
But we would be brought on and getting govern, government paychecks, but we, we can make it work. We can make it happen.
All right, dude.
Anyway, yeah, Hal would be my choice and I think.
She seems to make sense, dude.
I know Yang. I've known Yang for a long time. I think he would agree.
Uh, I think, I think Yang would definitely agree.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He loves her too, you know.
Does anyone object to Hal?
Hands up for objections, dude.
All right, I think we, uh, I think we're squared away.
There you go, first vote, first vote, what up? Hell, yeah. Sorry, I'm just jumping on desks at a celebration, don't mind me.
A- any more questions? I don't wanna keep you guys here all night.
Why not, dude? We have a slumber party.
Yeah, party.
I mean, I'm having fun, but, uh.
Dude, I'll play some music. I got like a whole bunch of drinks on me, like chicken wings, what up?
Did y'all need me to call Kalson to, uh, get her down here for that tourism thing or?
I haven't met her. I haven't met her. I'd like to actually meet her at some point.
I think, I think waiting.
Who all isn't interested too?
Yeah, let's wait.
I, I, I don't want, I, I don't think we need to have a meeting with her, but I do want you to call her when this is over and just tell her to prepare a presentation of sorts, right? Prepare like, like how would she try to sell this?
Bruh, she told me, yep, she, she told me it's nearly done and wants me to do like a legal review. And I'm like, I mean, I'm not a business person, but I'll look at it. I'm like, she's tucking fuck to.
Well.
Tucking fuck, you should fucking talk to Zeb about that, dude.
If she's, if she's already preparing it, that's fantastic. Then just let her know that the first council meeting will be the opportune time to, uh, to handle that, to present that to us.
And we're, and we're doing that tomorrow, seven-thirty, eight, right, Eastern?
Yes, uh.
Uh, eight Eastern, yeah, dude.
Eight Eastern, okay.
No, 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 not eight Eastern.
Show up at seven-thirty, which means eight-ten.
Eight, no, not eight Eastern, eight Pacific daylight time.
Okay, okay, okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
They'll show up at seven-thirty Pacific, uh, or between seven-thirty and eight.
Yeah, and we're trying to like get everything, like if we're not running by eight, by eight or, yeah, eight-ten, like knees will be broken.
There we go.
But, but you're, you're gonna get a.
I know a couple guys.
For us tonight, right?
We gotta do what?
You're gonna get a discordia thing set up for us?
Yeah, more or less, more or less the incident, everyone clears out of here.
All right, dude. This is gonna be at city hall, right? Not here? Cause there's more space at city hall or?
I think it was gonna be here, dude.
No, yeah, that's why we were kind of figuring out how, how this room would work.
Prototyping it now.
City hall would have to be on the lawn and it's been raining a lot lately. I don't know if the weather's gonna hold.
Yeah, obviously.
Yeah, the weather's just been rough.